Next item, please.
Next item is a discussion item. Boundary line changes, school of choice and boundary line exemptions, Dearborn High School addition. Dr. Glenn Maleko.
So I'm going to have Mr. Musson and Mr. Jafer come up. I'm going to kind of, kind of put it out there right away that, and we've been talking about this format. So today, we're just providing you with the feedback from the community forums. One of the things I just want you to be thinking about in your mind at the end of the meeting, we may talk about, I put out there, I sent out a doodle for a potential study session on March 1. Along with that, we're going to have, we're going to hope to schedule a leadership consultant that's been working with us, and I put this in board reese, at the time I consulted with President Lane, David Hewling's. And so we were, we're going to hopefully try to set up in the next, maybe in the month of February, training for the board to attend. They would be meetings that would be posted, but they don't have to be in full group. It would be just maybe you could choose one or two of the meetings. The reason why I'm mentioning this is just for the timeline. If we want to have any changes that would be necessary for next year, 18, 19, and again, there could be a phase in, but we would really have to make a decision by the, not the March study session, but by the March regular P-12 meeting. So that would be March 1. And the reason is because if we did make any changes, there's all social logistics that actually kind of start and are right around that timeline for student schedules and other things. So I want the board to be upfront aware that this is a timeline. Now, that doesn't mean we couldn't have other options for subsequent years, and we are moving forward as the board has directed us to do on the Dearborn High expansion. We're going to have some architectural designs hopefully ready for approval for the board. I believe Mr. Burek and Mr. Wall have mentioned in Mr. Gudzinski, you know, March for those, that, that classroom of the four classrooms in the cafeteria. But I just wanted to preface that, so when you're hearing the community forum, you're going to, you're also going to get some additional proposals from Mr. Masure, but just so you're aware that we do need to stick to that timeline if we want to make anything, any changes for next year. And again, it doesn't prevent us from doing some changes now and doing some longer term and other things. There's lots of options that our team is going to come up with, and I, you know, the team has been working very hard, spent a lot of time. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to these two fine gentlemen.
Well, be, on behalf of Mr. Jafer, my Simon to my Garfunkel, my Thelma to my Louise, and McMahon to Johnny Carson, I would like to thank President Mead, Superintendent and trustees for giving us this opportunity to kind of share out just some of the information that we kind of gathered from our community forums that were held in the fall of last year. You know, we started out every community forum with this slide, and I think this is an important slide to start out this presentation with as well, because it really does put in perspective the size of our district and the number of people that, that are involved in our district. Over 2,700 staff members, over 21,000 students, a budget of $240 million, the third largest district in the state of Michigan. So we're, we're a big district, and the things that we do here impact a lot of families and a lot of students. And I think too, it's important that we always remember the students, and we always put faces to those, to those names and faces to the, the things that we do here within our district. And there's many faces and many streams and lots of students in our district. And I think that's, that's always kind of wraps it and kind of puts things in perspective for us and puts things in focus. So we did have these community forums at 10 different schools, and we held a parent meeting at one school at the very end. And so we had approximately about 500 people, I would say. And I say approximately because we were, there were sign-in sheets at the meetings, but not everybody signed in who came to the meetings. And we also had several people who attended multiple meetings. And we had several staff members attend meetings as well and attend multiple meetings as well. So I, you know, so I, you know, kind of just put that into some kind of perspective, looking at the number of students, the number of families in our district, and how many attended. But the information that we gathered was valuable. You know, if many of you may know, I'm a bit of an aviation enthusiast tonight. I love flying and I love aviation. And, you know, sometimes we go outside, this past week or so, we wanted to know what the weather was like. And we'd go outside and we'd stand out there and we'd go, yeah, it's cold, it's really cold out here. And, you know, that's valuable. It's valuable information. If someone was to ask me what the temperature's like, I need to go outside and I need to find out what the actual temperature is like. It does me no good sitting in my living room looking out the window. I need to go outside. I need to get that temperature. I need to feel the mood. I need to feel what it is. And, and that's what these forums provided us. They provided us with that overall, with that temperature. Now, as a pilot, if I was going to go flying, I would call the National Weather Service. I'd get a special briefing that they prepare just for pilots that talks about the wind and the temperatures at different altitudes and the winds at different altitudes. It's much more detailed. It contains much more information. And as a Board of Education, that's what you're doing right now, and that's what you're planning with the study session coming up. You're planning on getting that more detailed report, which you need to make that final decision. However, that initial information, that initial temperature of what it's like is just as important, and these meetings were just as important for all of you to get that. So looking at the 10 different meetings and looking at the comments that we collected, and we collected them a couple of different ways. We collected comments when we were at the meetings, they were written down, and then also comments that were turned in via the website, the boundary blog that we did. And just kind of looking through those and kind of trying to develop some common threads throughout all 10 meetings, you can see here, these are just kind of the top five. There were many others, and we did prepare a document that has all the comments, and we will be posting that up onto the website. But these were kind of the common themes that kind of ran through. First off, there was definitely an understanding that we had to address the high school enrollment numbers. You know, I don't think that anybody denied that there was a capacity concern at the high schools. Also, people wanted to keep students together as much as possible, keep neighborhood schools. Out of the three proposals presented, people favored proposal 2. However, they also said, let's look at other options. And a lot of people frankly also said, we don't like any of these options. What about something else? And they presented things. They presented other options to us, for us to consider. And those options were shared with the Board of Education, and we will, and they were part of the documents that, the feedback documents that were provided to all of you. And then also, any decision that this board makes needs to consider the participation in extracurricular activities. I think that was another common thread that we kind of felt that we, we heard at all the meetings. And then what were some of the trending questions? What were some of those questions that we kept hearing at the different meetings? Well, obviously, there were questions about a fourth high school and a ninth grade academy. And I think that is some of the information that the board is going to find out and get, and has requested to get more information about and will be part of that up and coming study session that you're scheduling. Also additions at existing high schools. Transportation, when we just heard a great report from Mr. Andrews about that, and I think that that kind of addressed a lot of the questions that came up at the meetings as well. Also, people wanted to make sure that we were addressing the entire high school issue, that we weren't just looking at a Band-Aid fix, that this wasn't just something to fix a problem at one school, that it was going to fix the problem at all schools, and that it was going to be something long-term. And also the questions about Michael Berry and the Dearborn Heights Center. What goes on there? Why do we have construction there? Why would we consider adding on there? And what kinds of programs go on there? These were some of the trending questions. So what we did is we took those questions and we kind of grouped them together, the ones that were similar, and provided some answers in a frequently asked questions document, which again will be posted up to the boundary blog site. Speaking of which, here is the boundary blog site. You know, not only did we have the 10 community forums, but we also had kind of this online forum as well, where people could go on there and they could provide a survey and they could answer a few questions about what proposal they liked, what they didn't like, and provide feedback and comments. And what we found is that pretty much the attendance at the community forums pretty much mirrored the responses that we got on the website. So you can see here the numbers, and those numbers were pretty similar to what we saw percentage-wise at the community forums. As I said, the feedback form on the website kind of showed that out of the three proposals, people favored proposal 2. However, there was, there's a, you know, significant percentage there who said, I don't like any of these. And a lot of the comments that we received on those forums said, I like proposal 2, but I'd rather not have any. But, so they selected one kind of out of default. And otherwise, you know, they would say, you know, let's look at some other options. So just as the community forums provided a space for people to come and gather information and provide their feedback, so did the boundary blog. We had about 1,200 unique visitors to that blog site. They viewed, and on average, three of the three pages, they spent about three, four minutes on the site. So maybe not a long time there on the boundary blog. However, they did visit, they did use it as a resource for information. Once again, as I mentioned, we will be adding some of the information after tonight's meeting. We'll add that frequently asked questions document to the boundary blog. We'll add the comments that came from the meetings that we kind of tabulated and put together and organized, and also the information from the feedback forums as well, will be put up onto that blog site. And that's kind of a overview and recap, and we're more than willing to answer any questions.
Before we get to the answer, question, answer session, you know, David and I are very confident that we have, we have fulfilled the, the charge that the board has entrusted us with, with, which is solicit feedback from the community as a whole. Now, these are accurate numbers as far as what we could gather, as David has mentioned. But ultimately, even if we extended the period of comments or extended more community forums, I think the end result will remain the same. You have a very emotional decision to make, but also with that emotional decision comes a big responsibility. You know, we are one of the few districts that over the past 20 years, we have enjoyed continuous growth, student body-wise, building-wise, you name it. But there is a huge amount of support from our community in Dearborn towards providing its kids with the best possible educational venues and also opportunities. So again, this is just a snapshot of what we have been through. We will continue the process and we will be supplying feedback to the board or input to the board with the directions of our superintendent and, and the committee, the boundary committee in the district, and with the hope that we can move forward come this spring.
Trustee Barry?
You not only fulfilled your, your charge, but you filled it in a very professional manner and very respectful manner.
Thank you.
And I thank you for that.
Thank you.
We knew that the parents were going to show up. I attended most of, not all, the, with, with fellow colleagues. I mean, we, at least, we had two or three board members at any given time. There were sometimes four or five, so that was awesome participation with the board. What I was amazed with, with the students, when the students stood up and spoke, and staff, I mean, I thought, for the first time I heard, he was one of the coaches at Etzel Ford, I'm like, whoa, he's got to be brave, you know, to step up and say something, but then other staff members, teachers, very passionately, these are frontline, the teachers, the coaches, they hear from the kids. So I was, I was, I was very impressed with that. With the parents, they didn't just show up and complain. They showed up with some ideas. There was one fellow that, I mean, was there probably at every meeting and followed up, and I noticed he was talking to people at Woodworth, he was talking to people at Smith, so he was very, very engaged. So I was very happy with the community forums, to be honest with you. So thank you, thank you for, job well done.
Trustee Petlicov?
I just want, want to make a cautionary statement here. We have close to 21,000 students. We have, I think, close to 100,000 residents in the city of, as of the last census. I would assume parent-wise, I don't know what the number is of the parent population, but I'm told we're saying maybe 500 people showed up. And quite frankly, I did go to many of these, and they were the same people at each meeting, at each school, so that 500 was a repetition, a duplication of the same people going. So quite frankly, it was a very, fairly small representation of the community's voice that we heard. And I'm not downplaying their presence nor their concerns or, or their input at all. I'm just saying that it wasn't, and I'm not surprised, because normally you do not, even when you mail out surveys to homes or whatever, you don't get a large return from these kinds of attempts to solicit information from a community. But saying that, it also doesn't represent what a large number of the population may really be thinking. I mean, we know even when it comes to elections, if you get a 15 to 20 percent turnout of the registered voters, you know, that's not reflective of everybody in the community's desires. So, but that's who's participating. So quite frankly, when we go to make these decisions, we have to consider that we still have a lot of unheard voices that we're not really certain how they feel still. And I don't know how we reach those people, because quite frankly, until we make a decision and put it into action, that's when we will hear from a lot more of the community members if it doesn't satisfy their needs in some fashion or another. That's when they generally come out then and say, hey, I didn't know this was going to happen. So I just, I just, well, everybody's always surprised after the fact. So I just want to make sure that there's an understanding by all of us as we move forward in making these decisions, as well as by the community members who did participate, and then those who are going to maybe be in for surprise down the road, or maybe not, that it, it's a tough place to be in, in understanding what it is that is going to service our students the best. And as Dr. Mead said, we are the ones who are going to have to make that ultimate decision. And it's not going to end up being a, a debate amongst the community members in the end, because in the end, the responsibility falls upon us.
Recognizing this is not the first time that the Board of Education is involved in, in an adventure such as the boundary changes. I mean, you yourself have been involved, at least, what, this is your third probably round?
Probably, yeah.
So each time we solicit community input, we open it to everybody, you know, through the PTAs, through the Student Council and everybody else, even, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and every-
The neighborhood, I've worked through the neighborhood associations.
We invite them to come in, and, and also, the best thing about the format that we followed this year, it was like a huge committee, open forum committee, every single meeting, you know, where we solicited input on, on the website and also through surveys, you know, pencil and paper survey on the spot. So, you know, I agree with you. Maybe we had, you know, some numbers of dedicated individuals, you know, parents, teachers, community members who showed up almost every single meeting, and, and honestly, I, I tip my head, we both tip our heads to them for the hard work and dedication, and their voices were heard loud and clear, and they were tabulated in the results that we shared with you. But ultimately, I mean, no matter how much you stretch the, the process, there has to be a decision to address the needs of all students in Dearborn Public Schools, especially at the high school level. So I appreciate what you said, but we've done this, this before.
Trustee, excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you want to finish? I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. I yield the floor to President Mead.
To the boss.
Barry?
I just want to add to Trustee Petlicov's comments. Yes, there might have been 500 people at these forums, but I know with today's world, with social network, there was probably hundreds of people watching through Facebook or, you know, would watch on YouTube the next day. So there was probably, you know, there was more people than just 500 people involved in this decision. I myself would run into senior citizens in our community, those are investors in our community, they don't have students. And they had some good questions because they were reading the paper or they saw something on Facebook or what have you. So I think we reached more than just 500 parents. There's probably parents at home on a Tuesday night, they're probably cooking dinner for, you know, the kids or whatever, but they had their phones or the computers on, and they were watching us. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, and, you know, and to go along with that, if you looked, like I said, at the stats on the website, you see a lot of people did visit the website, so we did reach more. However, in support of both of you really, it's, I just want to make clear that, you know, it wasn't a statistical data, you know, like when you do a survey, you know, you, you aim for a specific number and you have very specific demographics that you try to hit. So you get that scientific data and cross-reference of the community. And that's not what we did here, but we did do a good job of reaching, you know, as many people as we possibly could.
Sure. Let's call it the way it is too. The, the parents that actually showed up.
Making good points.
Yeah, the parents that actually showed up, those are the ones that are going to be most affected. So we saw that at Smith. We saw that at Etzel Ford. We saw that at Fortson. You know, let's go back to, let's go to Dearborn High or Bryant, there weren't that many parents there. It was other parents from the other communities that showed up to Bryant and showed up to Dearborn High, because, you know, some of the parents, it's not going to affect their children, it's not going to affect the education of their kids. So I'm going to bring that up too. But overall, I, it was a great experience.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation. Also, our superintendent attended maybe most of the meetings.
All but the one we were for the Blue Ribbon School.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. You did a great job.
I have one observation.
Yes, sir.
It seemed like on the graph that there were more people attending at the Etzel Ford meeting. Is that true? Is, is, okay. So what are your observations about that? Why are that population most interested in this?
I think that the proposals, especially the one proposal that moved Smith out of Etzel Ford, impacted the largest number of people. And so therefore, those parents were, not only the Smith parents, but the Etzel Ford parents, whose children had moved through Smith, were concerned that Etzel Ford would lose its identity if Smith was moved out of there. So I think that that's why you saw the, the large numbers at, at Etzel Ford.
Is that in proposal 2?
No, that was in the other proposals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's why they preferred proposals.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes?
I just want to also add to everybody's comments, your comments, Trustee Barry as to, what, and I, we've said this before, you guys more than just fulfilled your duties really, and were a great representation of the board. Because this was, when you're talking about our children and really the success of this district is, you have to look at our parents and how involved they were. And this was a testament of that. And watching some of those meetings, and I was very happy that they were available online, because everybody was taping in the world of social media today. But the passion that was behind every single comment just showed how many people are invested in our district, our students, they care, and I think that that really is what pushes districts like us, districts like ours to succeed, is that passion. But at the end of the day too, like Trustee Patlickov said, we're not here to make the easy, easy decision. We're here to make the best decision. And that's never easy. That's never easy. But I am thankful for those that have had the experience to serve on this board before, that have been through something like this in the past and have assured newbies like myself, you know, who at times like this, we could get nervous in terms of how do we please everyone? We're never going to be, please everyone, ever. So it really is comforting to know about past experiences, and guess what? This district has survived them all and will survive them yet again, hopefully, so.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice presentation. Our next item, please.
Board of Education Business, a acknowledgement of correspondence.
Something, just Attorney General for Michigan, Bill Shute, just sent in a thank you letter just for going to Fortson and being able to present, I know, Trustee Lane, you were there. And then the other one we had, I had was from Senator Stabenow, just a picture she sent congratulating Becker on the Blue Ribbon School, so, because we visited with her in Washington.
I know we did hear this in commendations as well too, but we did receive a letter from Ms. Ann Guatra as well, as to the teacher, Carmen Atkins.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So that was really nice to, I don't have the letter here with me.
Yeah.
I know that, I saw that you were copied on the letters one.
Yes.
But it's just so nice to see positive emails about our staff, you know, and people that work in the district. So that was really nice to see.
And once in a while, you see from me too, when I get things, I'll try to forward it to you to see.
Yeah.
And, you know, to appreciation for our staff, we also will place some of those letters in their personnel file, just as a record, a positive record. Thank you.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Anybody, any committees reporting?
We did meet-
Oh, is this the Policy Committee?
Yes. Aren't you glad you're not in the Policy?
Well, it's the most important, one of the most important committees. I do not mean to-
If you recall, last time, I had requested, and thank you, Dr. Maleko, just to see the form for the Dearborn Public Schools Department of Student Services Enrollment and Census Form. And basically, it's just an enrollment form and requirements for how, residency. And we had noticed that nowhere on there does it say that a student must reside at the verified address. And that was something that we had discussed last time, if you recall. It said to just list an address, but nowhere does it say on there that the student must reside at that address. That was interesting. We asked that that be added, so now it is added to our enrollment and census form. So we do have a copy of that if anybody wants to see. We're also reviewing many policies, making sure that they are in accordance with state law and so on. Those will be up for discussion and approval. Some of the ones that we went over today are eligibility of resident, non-resident students, kind of what defines a resident or a non-resident student, and the guidelines behind that. We went over, we used to have school of choice. As you all know, we don't have school of choice anymore. So we're going through those revisions of how to take that out and what to, and to include in the actual school of choice policy, for example, that in the year 2007, we got rid of school of choice, but we still do have boundary exemption. Abe Masure is working on guidelines for that, that would be up in front of the board for approval, and we'll discuss that with you when they come through. We went over some policies for expulsions and suspension, and I know Mason Bazey's here as well, who's been kind enough to help us go through this and edit those. If I miss anything, please let me know. I know that in terms of this, we also went through the policy of student discipline. There were not much changes that we made. Anybody on the Policy Committee that want to go over anything else?
You brought up some nice points, just that most of our policies have to be integrated, or a lot of them do, with state law. So there are changes in state law as far as expulsion language or for what a student can be expelled or, so those things, we're trying to finesse those things.
As well as trying to get the actual policies and the guidelines that are in the policies updated together, so the language matches in both.
Good. It's great work. Very important work. Policies is a responsibility of the board, so good. Anybody else have anything to report? I do. I've been attending the RISA board meetings, October, November, and December, as I'm supposed to do. And it's been very interesting, because they have a little different perspective than we do, simply because they're dealing with 31 or 32 districts within Wayne County. So they kind of have an overview, and their, their budgets are fine. They use 90 percent of the money for the districts. They keep 10 percent for emergencies when districts are starting to have trials and The superintendent for RISA is-
Randy Lippa, Dr. Randy Lippa.
Dr. Randy Lippa. He has the greatest respect for this man, and he mentions it frequently. And the Cotter School came up as some cog people came- And the Cotter School came up, as SEMCOG people came and made a report to RISA Board, and they said their goal this year has everything to do with equity. And they said there's not a better example of equity education than the early childhood center at Cotter. So that, I go, wow. I have to tell you, too, I'm the only one there from any district. I'm the only one attending the Board meetings for RISA from any district. And so they all, they asked me, do you have an opinion on this? I say, you guys are the board for the RISA, leave me alone. But they constantly, because there's so few people there, that they always are asking me their opinion. The November meeting, Plant Moran was there, and said the budgets are really good, everything is copacetic. They did bring up the elimination of the State Board of Education as a constitutional matter, and they don't think that it will ever, ever happen. Awful lot of discussion about charter schools, from the point of view of the Enhanced Village Fund. That's a constant discussion, and they're very, very concerned about it. And December meeting, oh, they had a choir from Gibraltar, eighth grade, oh my gosh, they were fantastic, and three soloists. I know who's going to get the parts in the plays when they get into high school. Oh, there's a presentation by Ms. Pamela Spencer, does anybody know her? She's an Early Childhood Specialist Program. Okay. Now, they hired 22 early childhood specialists, and they're going to hire three more. So they are in 495 classrooms within the Wayne RISA District. They mainly working with first graders to try to get them to be able to read well by the third grade. So I did bring a job description for the early childhood specialist, because I don't know if we're working with them or not, or if they don't consider our district one that they want to work, I don't know what's going on, but they do have specialists, and wow, they have very good credentials. All right, I'll shut up.
May I make a comment on your-
Yes.
A little while ago, I was in contact with a couple of our state senators, and then a state representative also, asking for some education statistics, and particularly in Wayne County. So I asked about, since you mentioned the Wayne County Enhancement Village, and I know that the state legislature is trying to get money to charter schools in any possible way. So they want to share the Enhancement Village, which we all worked on to support special education. So, that being said, I asked, I think it was David Kinesik's office, how many of the Wayne County Charter Schools who would be sharing money that we all campaigned to raise, how many of those are for-profit, and how many are nonprofit? I don't remember the numbers exactly, but I think it was generally about 108 charter schools in Wayne County. Only eight of those are not-for-profit. So, Dr. Mead, you mentioned that Enhancement Village, and I would just like to say to people that I'm about public education. Public education produced wealth for my children, and so many children that I know, and it built this country. I am opposed to public monies being shared for private, for-profit institutions. Thank you. So we need to be, we need to be aware of this, and I'm glad you're going to that, because we need to oppose this. We voluntarily raised our own taxes for a specific purpose, and it was not for someone else's priority to make a profit off of children's education. So, I'd just like to remind everyone, we need to be vigilant in the next year on that topic.
Well, I have to tell you that the Board, the RISA Board is very much against this-
Of course they are, they should be.
Yeah, they're really vocal about it.
Yeah. Public money for public schools that operate by public rules, that give people pensions to retire, that give people health care in their retirement. In the next year, we're going to see a tax on public facilities, public benefits, so we need to be aware of that. And if we're in favor of the public good, we need to express our opposition to public monies being side-channeled to other purposes.
And the problem with a lot of these for-profit charter schools is the lack of oversight.
Right.
And that is, it has been my biggest concern all along, because I've heard about some of these charter schools, and I've kind of gotten wind about a few of the high schools that seem to be operating in a manner that gives me great pause, when I've heard that they've got a very low number of students, and most of them are dual-enrolled, so they're not taking classes at this charter school, they're going into the local community colleges and taking their classes. And so they're avoiding having to pay anything at their buildings themselves. These kids are enrolled, their parents are, you know, have them in the buildings supposedly, but they're leaving for the day because of the dual enrollment programs that are available. So they're almost, it appears to me, double-dipping from the taxpayers' pockets when they're taking advantage of these regulations. But nobody's paying attention, nobody's overseeing them. We have a lot of regulations placed upon the public school systems that we have to abide by, and yet it seems a lot of these charter schools are really able to skirt a lot of those, but yet they want to continue to profit from the taxpayers. And it concerns me deeply that we voted in order to protect our students' abilities to be educated, and not put this money into the pockets of other people in the community.
I want to make sure I understand this right. If legislators pass this, they won't throw the charter schools in the pool until the next-
The next goal.
We're talking about five and a half years from now.
Which then may jeopardize its passing again.
Exactly, that's, that was going to be my next point, that's probably gonna jeopardize, that's going to cost us some money, because, yeah, I mean, obviously, if we're gonna bring in a dollar from our taxpayers and 50 cents and go to corporate America, we're probably not going to push for it ourselves, we're not, so.
Good point.
Yeah, and initially, they had it where it was, retro, now legally, whether they could have, but then they changed it, and now, again, it still hasn't passed, it's in the committee. And so I agree with all the comments by everyone here, Trustee Barry, Trustee Elaine, everyone, Trustee Petlichkov, all of you actually have commented on this. I thank the Board for opposing it in a previous Board meeting, because that's where the Randy Lepa and the group from Wayne County, you know, provide direction, but they support, and I want to say that I have the utmost respect for him and all the county superintendents. The county provides us with a lot of support in different areas, I have regular meetings with them on important issues. I'm bringing it up again, but one of the days is snow days, they do provide support there, too, on just information, but more importantly, that instructional areas like literacy. You mentioned the early childhood specialist. We do have our own early childhood specialist program that we adopted the village, but we still partner with them, and I know Dr. Chokol, Dr. Mosalem, Ms. Peterson, we have HR that goes to meetings, so there's a lot of support in Mr. Patterson's technology, so we do work very collaboratively. We've got a good group there, and it's very important, I think, for our students, and you saw, just before the break, we were actually able to take advantage, you mentioned Cotter, we were able to take advantage of two additional classrooms at Dr. Chokol, Ms. Lambert, and her team, and I'd say the principals of the buildings, Ms. Stanley, Speciallett, and Dr. Mosalem, and Mr. Saley were involved, but everyone came together quickly, because there was a quick deadline, like within two days, to get this information in, so that we could help our students. So, we also should, long-term, and I've mentioned this, too, since you mentioned Cotter, I know SEMCOG has reported on it, and some of their reports, and the mayor has talked about it in some of his SEMCOG meetings, but long-term, if that's something, the state hasn't fully funded it, but the data and the research showing, you know, the positive impact, and we're doing some tracking of the early childhood, that that'll be something long-term, we have to consider space and capacity as well. We're fine at the elementary and middle, but if there were ever a decision to continue to expand that, and I would tell you that that is, it's in, you know, the strategic plan and the goals, that that is one of the right things to do, that I'm very supportive of early childhood, it does make a difference, and so this early childhood specialist, but it's just something we need to keep in the back of our mind. And what we're doing right now, we're going to be doing in the buildings, is we're going to be just looking, we have to find some space in some of the schools for these classes, so that's what we're doing in the elementary and middle. We're trying to be forward-thinking, so you're not just looking at the high school, we're doing, we're going to be doing a study coming up of space issues, not that there's a problem, but just what is our space if we needed to add classrooms, whether that be for GSRP or just added classrooms because of enrollment. So, I appreciate the comments that everyone has made, and it's been a real nice dialogue. Thank you, Dr. Mead, and everyone.
Next item, please.
Next item, Board Member or Superintendent Commentary.
That might have been it.
Just one quick one. I don't know if it falls under here, but on the website, it still says our April meeting is on Monday, April 9th.
Oh, okay.
With a disclaimer that we might move it to Tuesday. Have we made a decision?
We did, yes, we moved it to the Tuesday.
It's official, that would make a difference for me if I attend that conference. Who is attending that conference, the national?
Dr. Mead.
Okay. I'll let you know in the morning, or let Joanne know in the morning, from the side. Okay, so, that does make a difference for me.
Okay, so the Board meeting is the 10th?
Tuesday.
The 10th.
Yeah, it's not on our meeting dates on this agenda, but, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because on the website, it still says the 9th with a disclaimer if we want to update it, so-
Sure, yeah, thank you.
People would know, yeah.
We'll update that.
Next item?
Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items.
Very none? Excuse me, Trustee Barry.
You can keep looking that way. I just want to go on the record for, to put on the agenda for possibly the next meeting. It's nothing urgent, I mean, we can do it tonight, but we don't need to. I want to call for a close, I'm going to put a motion on table at the next meeting for a closed session for personnel matters with Superintendent Maleko. I don't want to get into discussion, because last time we did that, it didn't go well. I'm just giving you the heads-up for next meeting.
All right, so that would be on the agenda, and then it's a motion?
Yeah.
And the Board would decide whether they want to go into closed session or not? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes?
This is not a future agenda item, but tomorrow, the city of Dearborn will swear, it will swear in a couple of new city council members, and congratulations, I think we should congratulate them, I know, we're all excited.
We were all invited to attend that.
Yes, we were. And the mayor. Yeah, I'm sorry to see a couple of, or at least one that's departing, but also, tomorrow, Dr. Maleko and Dr. Mosalem, and some other people from the district, will be attending the State Board of Education meeting with State Superintendent Wiston, and I know that at least one item on the agenda is the seal of biliteracy, which Dearborn has been a leader on, so, just another good thing that we're doing.
Yes, very positive, they've, I know your leadership with that on the Board, and then with the group, Dr. Mosalem, Ms. Aldubeli, and other teachers that have been working on the committee. We had two teachers, Margarita from Etzel, and Ms. Nabilah Hmadi from Dearborn High that have been working, and so they wanted us to come as a positive recognition that Dearborn has taken the lead. And I've been on conference calls with them going back maybe half a year to set this up, and so they're very excited about this opportunity, so thank you.
Next item, please.
Your favorite one. Future meeting dates.
No, 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 you're getting to the favorite one.
Oh, okay.
That's the next one.
You're going to post that picture?
Yeah.
Future meeting dates, Tuesday, January 16th, 2018, Henry Ford College meeting, 7:00 PM, in the Rosnoe Boardroom at Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College. Monday, February 12th, 2018, P-12 Policy Committee meeting, 6:00 PM, at the Administrative Service Center in the Superintendent Conference Room. Monday, February 12th, 2018, P-12 Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM, at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. And Wednesday, February 14th, 2018, P-12 Special Meeting Open, 3:00 PM, at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom. Next item?
Next item?
It's all yours.
Oh, boy, hot dog. You're a jerk.